Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of August 17th, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. We're the privilege tonight of having the invocation led by our new Assistant City Manager, he's one of two, Gary Helen, and then following the invocation, Nathan Chen, who's a senior at Stockdale High, will lead us in the pledge. Nathan is one of two interns that was chosen by Bank of America to be their student leader, and they provided, they provided support for him to work at the mission at Kern County throughout the summer. He did an exceptional job. Nathan is a Boy State Delegate, ASB President, he's on the National Honor Society, varsity golf captain, 2,500 hours of community service. Is that all, Nathan? He's bassoonist in the Bakersfield Youth Symphony Orchestra and plays the alto saxophone. He's a section leader for the Stockdale Marching Band Color Guard. And so we appreciate your willingness to lead us in the pledge. Would you all please stand for the invocation now?
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful as we stand today at this special City Council meeting, we're grateful to be together and to be here with our good City Council. We ask thee to bless them, bless them at this meeting, to make important decisions and to bless their service, their time, and their passion for this city and for those that they serve individually and collectively. We ask that we have a spirit of love and collaboration here tonight and that those in attendance will be able to feel edified and feel unity and love toward one another as well as toward this great city. We're grateful for opportunities to grow and for opportunities to be better. We're grateful that we can do that here in this city together. We ask thee to bless us, to have that unity and that love, that we'll be able to build bridges and build things that will stand not only for now, today, but for generations to come. And we ask a special blessing on this meeting with the Spirit to be with us. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Nathan, we are so proud of you. Thank you so much for all that you're doing. All the best. You better go home and do your homework so you can get a 4.88 on your GPA. No, you'll probably be a 5.0, like exceeding all expectations. Thank you so much, Mr. Helen. Thank you very much, and welcome to all of you. Welcome to a place of unity, collaboration, and love, as Mr. Helen prayed. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly, efficient meeting, is not allowed. That prevents us from conducting the business of the city. Consider this, a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
Thank you. In keeping with Council's resolution, the public statements portion of the meeting is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and for items not listed on the agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Those speakers will be called during that portion of the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received eight speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Jim Redstone regarding item 7G.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm just here for Agenda Item 7G. I'm Jim Redstone with Rock Harbor Church. We're a major property owner within that 20-acre parcel for annexation. We request that it be set aside, removed off of the consent agenda so we can have some discussion at appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redstone. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Go, the following six speakers are regarding item 12A. The first speaker, Perla Lopez Flores.
Welcome. Hello, council members. My name is Perla Lopez Flores, and I'm a student at Golden Valley High School. Just yesterday, my friend was able to purchase these vaping products just down the street from my home. This is what our retailers think of me, a 15-year-old high school student. Once addicted, will continue to go back and become a regular of theirs. More concerning, my fellow peers brag about buying these products at this store. In spite of presentations we have sat through that tell us how dangerous tobacco or the projects posted around campus, stores are making it just too easy to cave into social pressure. I hope that this is proof to you that the burden of accessibility falls on the responsible retailers that sell tobacco to kids like me and the ones sitting in the audience. It is time we hold tobacco retailers responsible. A TRL is sustainable, evidence-based, and has worked for our Kern County communities that have adopted the TRL program. I urge you to vote on the clear solution to decreasing accessibility of these products to kids. Vote option one, to adopt the Kern County TRL program. If you don't, the burden of the youth addicted to tobacco falls on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez Flores. Madam Clerk, would you announce the next speaker, please, and just the following one so that the person can be ready?
Malachi Payne and Lindsay Call.
Malachi, go ahead first.
Welcome. Hi, Ma'ewa. Good evening, councilmen. I come humbly to you all as a part of the Native American and African-American community today to tell you that there is a big problem with tobacco within these two communities. The controversy behind the tobacco industry is no secret to anyone. This industry deliberately targets Indian youth and African-American youth as well. They exploit our images such as our war bonnets and our regalia that we use in our powwow circles, and this is a very, very big problem. Indian men, Indian adults have the highest prevalence of smoking these tobacco products within California. One in every three Native American adult consumes tobacco products on a daily basis, and this is nationally. This problem affects Native youth as well, with smoking prevalence in Native youth being at 4.7%, with the general population of other youth averaging at about 2.7%. The prices of these cigarettes are cheaper in these communities as well. Within Indian communities, your average box of cigarettes is $7.07 compared to the average, which is $7.11. These price gouges are deliberately targeting these communities, and that is an issue. I urge you, councilmen, to please go to these communities and talk to them in a good way and see how they want changes within their communities with these tobacco products, because it is affecting us and it is taking away our elders and our adults. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Call, and I'm a resident of Ward Four. I'm raising two children in Bakersfield, including a 12-year-old middle school student, which is one of the key reasons that I wanted to get involved with increasing tobacco enforcement locally. So many cities in Kern County have adopted the county's tobacco retail licensing ordinance, which leads to greater enforcement of things like not selling tobacco and e-cigarette products to teens. Just recently, a youth member of the Students Working Against Tobacco group was able to purchase a tobacco product. I would like to see Bakersfield City take a stronger stance on this so that this will not continue to happen. Because the licensing fees will cover the enforcement costs, this will not negatively impact the city's budget. And so again, as a member of Ward Four, I urge you to adopt the county's TRL ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Call. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Patsy Romero, followed by Bernardo Ochoa.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for giving us the time to speak our voice. California does have a tobacco product retail license. It is to prevent retailers from avoiding to pay their taxes and selling unregulated tobacco products. A local tobacco relay license would not replace that, but it would have enforcement. We could have the enforcement, they would comply with local compliances, and it would enforce it, such as the kids buying tobacco and them keeping the law. In 2019, 40% of C-City retailers 1,000 feet from schools in Bakersfield sold tobacco products to underage youth. The Kern County Health Stores for a Healthy Community Public Opinion Survey in 2019 found that 92.2% of Bakersfield respondents who answered this survey wanted the tobacco retailers in Bakersfield to have a TRL. Currently, cities in Kern County who have one are Tehachapi, Wasco, California City, McFarland, Delano, Arvin, Taft, and Shafter. Currently, there's 58 counties in California, right around 500 cities. 127 cities in Bakersfield, I mean in California, have a TRL. Bakersfield is in the top 10 according to population for those cities. Seven of those cities have a TRL. Bakersfield, Fresno, Anaheim do not. So we're asking you, please, please consider having a TRL for the City of Bakersfield in order to save our youth from the poison of nicotine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Bernardo Ochoa. I am a member of Tobacco Free Coalition of Kern County and a resident of Ward Seven. I thank you for considering options to reduce youth access to tobacco and vaping products. This is a huge step for our community and, most importantly, our kids. For Dream Builders, Kern High School District, the Bakersfield Police Department, shoulder tap and education efforts, the tobacco education programs at the Public Health and their tobacco enforcement programs are a few of the local programs that drive education on the harms of tobacco. Unfortunately, the illegal sales to minors remains a main concern. Options two, four, and five that the City Manager Office will present to you will not work long-term, nor should we look at this as a short-term solution until the state provides stronger legislation. With 347 retailers, education and check-ins will be limited to the time you dedicate to this effort, your specifics, especially of this work. Education efforts have already been made and have been driven for years with no reduction in sales. Our current tobacco ordinance are not enough, and it is proven in the local data on youth purchase rates, testimonials from our youth, discussions we have with our local retailers, some which still believe that may sell to anyone 18 or older where the tobacco 21 legislation was immediately put into effect in 2019. I urge you to let the public health professionals who have already established an effective tobacco retail licensing program lead these efforts to prevent more delays and laps in the enforcement efforts as they have done for years in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa. Your time is up. But thank you. You can go ahead and give that to the city clerk. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The last speaker on this item is Jackie Caslow.
Thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I come to you today as a professor of nursing at UC San Francisco and as a partner to the Bakersfield American Indian Health Project. It's located here in Bakersfield. I'm a primary partner of theirs, and my work is centered around health services, including the use of tobacco and it's the problem that we have with its health impacts. But more importantly, I'm a Native American person who stewards a program here in Bakersfield for youth, Native youth, and we look at the issues of tobacco use within our community. I think what I'd like to share with you is that I'm highly troubled by the level of knowledge that the youngest youth in this community have about tobacco products. We've worked with youth in Lake Isabella, here in Bakersfield itself, and children as young as four and five years old have seen peers and older siblings use these products. I think it's really incumbent upon you to consider the power that you have to change the normalization of these types of products and their harms to our community. Specifically, as an American Indian person, they are an absolute assault on our cultural use of tobacco, which has absolutely nothing to do with commercial tobacco products. And so we fight very hard to regain and reclaim our traditional use with these products. But again, as a health person, I really am concerned about the normalization of flavored tobacco products and the perspective that kids have when they see them so commonly advertised and so readily available. So that's my message to you, and I hope that you'll consider this on behalf of our partner, Bakersfield American Indian Health Project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caslow. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Holly Arnold regarding item 7Q.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Go, members of the council. I just wanted to give you an update on the Bakersfield Symphony. I want to thank you once again for your consideration on the city's budget, and many of you don't really know what we've been able to accomplish, in fact, just since COVID, and I thought I'd share a little update. The Bakersfield Symphony not only puts on beautiful subscription concerts, but we've also added a family matinee. We've greatly increased our education programming, and since COVID started in the fall of 2020, we have reached our online, we went virtual, which is now hybrid programs, but we offer free programs, and our programs were shared through every corner of Kern County. It went into 37 states, the United Kingdom, and Canada, and still continues to grow. Since then, we've reached almost 18,000 through our BSO next-generation programming. 103,000 students have participated in our online virtual and in-person young people's concerts, and again, this is just since 2020. And we have education materials online, and we have had over 60,000 views from educators sharing them with their students. So we're really proud of those things that we're able to do. We put Bakersfield Symphony on the map when many were closed down, and we continue to grow. We're a 91-year-old nonprofit here in town. I really fully believe in the arts being an important factor in the community, and we appreciate your consideration in the past and again going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Madam Clerk, any others in this category?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. And now, do we have any speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
We do, Mayor Go, with the first public speaker, Rich O'Neill.
Yes, and before we get there, I just wanted to make one point of clarification. Mr. Redstone, you mentioned making comments, and I know that our council member here is familiar with what you were going to communicate, and so he'll be doing that during the meeting. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, staff, and community of Bakersfield. My name is Rich O'Neill, and this evening I represent the Kern River Parkway Foundation. And I'm here to talk about BISA. BISA is an acronym that stands for Bakersfield Environmental Studies Area. If you don't know where that is, it's the 400 acres of primary and secondary floodplain immediately north and across the street from Cal State Bakersfield. You want to see it, probably your best access is at that point, at East Hart Lane or down at Arrow Park. There's access for horsemen and walkers and so forth. The BISA area was dedicated in August of 1985. It's described in your general plan and the Kern River Parkway EIR. What is it? It's about 400 acres, mostly secondary floodplain, hundreds of trees, native trees, and shrubs. And why did we develop it? We developed it so the students, Cal State Bakersfield, and other organizations and colleges could have a place to study, a riparian zone that was fairly well protected. It was designed for protection and restoration, and several students have studied within those areas through the years. And now, Cal State Bakersfield, University of Bakersfield staff and students want to again revisit the BISA area. And I'm running out of time here. I just want to thank you and ask you for your continued support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
The following speaker is Rodney Bohannon.
I have a handout. Do I give it to you now?
You can go ahead and give it to the clerk. Welcome.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you for your time. My name is Rodney Bohannon, Jr. I'm an owner of a property located at 1729 Brunedige Lane here in Bakersfield. On February 23rd, city code enforcement did an inspection on my property and cited me for various violations. I had an abatement inspection on my property and cited me, oh, wait, for various violations, excuse me, on my property, hearing on 524, a wish the hearing officer Mark issued an order declaring existence of a public nuisance or the condition constituting one. I filed a timely appeal to the order in the City of Bakersfield Code Enforcement and Policy Procedure Manual. In the Code Enforcement and Policy Procedure Manual, there are only two chapters that could relate to my violation, Chapter 7 and Chapter 9. The appeal process applied in the order is in line with Chapter 7. The city attorney, Ashley Sembrano, and very Galardo King, as well as the city manager's office, set forth an hearing process that does not adhere to those policies or state law. I stated that I strongly disagree with the formation of this hearing process that they had set forth. I argued that the City of Bakersfield Code on Policy and Procedure Manual does provide procedures in which a hearing process regarding violations of the Uniform Building Code, California Building Code, California Municipal Code, and California Public Code, and the National Electric Code are held. They're held under Chapter 7. Chapter 7, Step 11, states, "The property owner may appeal decisions of the hearing to the city manager or designee within 10 days of the date of the decision. If appealed, no further action can be taken until after the hearing is held before the city council. If no appeal is made, the property owner fails to comply with the order hearing. Officer, city is authorized to abate the nuisance." My violations against my property were cited under the Uniform Housing Code, California Building Code, California Electric Code.
Thank you, your time is up. But we have your information here. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Bohannon, for coming today to speak to the council. I'll follow up with you. I see I have your cell phone number here. I'll call you tomorrow so we can talk when I want to continue the conversation, also work with city staff, see what we can do to work with you to address some of your concerns. Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
O.C. Crawford.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. Good to see all you good-looking folks. You do seem to be looking better, and it seems to be a higher, lighter vibration in the room. I do think that COVID has done some good. It's done an awful lot of bad, but I feel that the worst is over, and now we're only going forward and upward. The reason I'm here is because I have extended an invitation to our fifth, which is the milestone, our fifth awards banquet, whereby we will be honoring some ministers of all people, religious people, believe it or not, we'll be honoring some ministers and some elected officials, a few which happen to be on the stands right now. I didn't receive any response, so I'm not sure if it got through or God went to send the junk mail or what, but anyway, I brought handwritten notification, and I want to leave that with you. And I do hope that you all can come. I feel it's a new day. It really is a new day for not only Bakersfield and Kern County, but for the world. We are definitely going forward, and the ideal of building a kingdom on earth is something that we have to take to heart and start doing ourselves with the help of God. I think this has always been our responsibility. So I just would like to invite all who want to come. You're welcome to come, whether you get a personal invitation or not, you're welcome to attend. So thank you, and God bless you, and you all are looking very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next speaker, please.
Eddie Lane.
Sure. Madam Clerk?
Miguel Rodriguez, followed by Eddie Lane. Miguel Rodriguez, followed by Eddie Lane.
Good evening, City Council. I come to you tonight on behalf of Bring Back the Kern with unity and love that will last for generations in our community. My name is Miguel Rodriguez, a Bakersfield native. I am a video game designer by trade and an internationally renowned musician, dancer, and visual performer by passion, touring the Lower 48 and the world for six years with the 20-time gold medalist, the Blue Devils Drum and Bugle Corps. "Make Bakersfield Wet Again." That would be my slogan if I ever ran for City Council. And on that note, I would like to leave you with a short excerpt out of "The Ruling the Waters" by Douglas Littlefield. Before the arrival of European-Americans in the Lower San Joaquin Valley, swamps and marshes were present across the breadth of the Central Valley. Waterfowl and other water birds swam across the breadth of the Central Valley and on the surface or stood in the shallows of permanent and seasonal freshwater marshes, which were renewed annually by the spring flooding of the valley's rivers. Thundering hawks and quacks of enormous flocks of geese and ducks descending from the sky or taking flight en masse from the water revealed from afar the locations of these marshes clustered in the low-lying or poorly drained basins of the valley. Ephemeral vernal pools and large playa pools filled with aquatic invertebrates and surrounded by brilliantly colored flowers lay scattered amid millions of acres of native valley grasslands. Expansive riparian forests with their massive valley oaks as well as evergreen oaks, cotton woods, and sycamores lined the major rivers and creeks, creating thick ribbons of green and vertical relief from the flat valley floor. Within these seasonal flooded forests, herons, egrets, and roosted in colonies and brightly-colored wood ducks nested and raised their young in tree cavities. I come here to bring you guys a visual of what our city can be with more water in it. This used to be a wetland. The Southern Valley floor was full of water. And I understand the complexity of this issue, but I truly believe that if we listen to each other and work together, we can build a different future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Eddie Lane with the Sierra Club. My role is to review the PowerPoint presentation which the city clerk at my request has arranged for you to view. Of course, this cannot be done in two minutes. That's why I'm passing out copies without the color for your review. Can we start the first few slides? The first few slides show the entry point for Kern River water to the new 2022 pumps. These pump water into the Kern River Golf Course and Lake Ming. Again, in 2016, there was an agreement to begin water metering of city water used to Lake Ming. This has not been done. The new pumps for the golf course, please continue on. The new pumps for the golf course are equipped with a capacity to meter water, but that's not being done. These, either as a pumps, thank you. Let's continue on, please. The next few slides show how the Kern River water is brought to two large storage ponds. Please continue. Most of this water goes to California, yeah, please continue on, California water. However, a portion is diverted to the soccer fields and by gravity, yes, by gravity to Hart Park. Please continue on. That gravity flow is one of the critical points in that the city water is going to Hart Lake. Again, this is city water going to Hart Lake. The last few slides, and you'll just have to do them quickly, show the effects of inaction during the last six months during which this has been a public issue. And we've seen in the newspaper two articles about the lack of water at River Park. Well, haven't we, why haven't we been able in six months to do something to get water at River Park? We can make a change if we decide to, and there's not been the action we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Next speaker, please.
The last speaker is Sharon Bril.
Hi there.
Welcome.
Good evening or good afternoon. I've lived in Bakersfield for 22 years. I'm a transplant from Southern California, and I reside in Bruce Raymond's ward. I ride the Kern River Parkway daily from CSUV to Enos Lane, and I so appreciate the Parkway and the recreation it provides. However, I pass Lake Truxton and the Laket River Walk and see them going dry. I see the people and the birds still trying to fish in the small puddles that remain. I see the city has bulldozed most of the native plants and life to the bare soil around Lake Truxton. In just the last week, work done by volunteers to plant native plants along the Kern River destroyed by city staff unaware that those plants had been planted. But our local golf courses are full, their lakes are full, and they're super green. I don't understand why the golf courses are not allowed, are not following the same water conservation rules that I must follow. A group of citizens met with the city water resource manager, Art Chanello, on 8/5, and I'm providing you copies of the summary of that meeting. It was a two-hour meeting. I really appreciate the time they spent with us. But one of the more shocking things was the confirmation from Art that the city had not yet implemented an agreement with the county to meter water used by the county to fill Hart Lake, irrigate Hart Park, and the Kern River Golf Course. The agreement was approved by the city council in 2016. As you know, the Bakersfield Californian opinion piece on 2022 noted that the county had failed to develop written water conservation plans for Hart Park and the other surrounding areas, and no water meter was being used. So in closing, I just want to say, enforce water conservation on golf courses. Ensure that the water metering is done for any of the water sold to the county by the city. Refill Truxton and River Walks to at least 50% and provide recreation to citizens as a priority.
Thank you, Ms. Bril.
Thank you very much, your time.
Madam Clerk, next item, please. Oh, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just question the staff. I know we've been talking to the county, are there any progress on getting it metered and some conservation practices going there?
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. You're correct, we have had conversations with the county. As noted, there is metering specific to the site of the golf course. The metering to the other pumps, our water resources folks have made plans for how to accommodate that. In prior years, it hasn't escalated in our CIP project list, but we put together a plan that we think we can get that done in the near term and continue in our conversations with the county on conservation.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 6A, appointments, two appointments, Ward 5 alternate member and Ward 6 regular member to the Youth Commission to complete a term to expire July 31, 2024. Applications for appointment have been received from Jaden Baring, Harjisel Brar, Sanjna Mazar, Samuel Chambly, and Miriam Webster.
Thank you. These appointments are by ward, therefore no ballots are required. I'm going to call on the Vice Mayor to nominate on behalf of Councilmember Freeman for the alternate youth commission member, and then Councilmember Gray for Ward 6 for the regular youth commission member. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Go. Mr. Councilmember Smith has asked me to make his nomination tonight.
Freeman.
I'm sorry. I didn't see you sitting there. Councilman Freeman has asked me to nominate in his absence, and if I could find it on my phone. Oh, I know where I got this name. Never mind. Okay. He has asked me to nominate Harjisel Brar. He's a Gate student at Stockdale High School with a 4.3 GPA, vice president of the speech and debate team. He's an Eagle Scout, an active volunteer with local community organizations, and the Bakersfield Health Committee.
Thank you. And now Councilmember Gray.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Miriam Webster. She is a sophomore at Stockdale High School for the regular member of the Youth Commission. Miriam is a very well-rounded student that's not only a 4.0 student, but also involved in music, athletics, and other campus activities. Her instrumental director noted her as a standout student. When interviewing her in my office, I was extremely impressed with her positive attitude, her work ethic as a young woman. Her interest was sparked for the Youth Commission when she researched some of the projects that the Youth Commission does, is involved in, and she really desired to serve her community. She's been involved with Girl Scouts, Great American Cleanup, and a donation project for an ill friend that was hospitalized. She's also involved with the youth at the Bridge. And as I talked to her, I thought, wow, what a busy girl. Okay. In our visit, I heard a heart of compassion coming through her and a seriousness to live a purposeful life. So I would like to nominate Miriam Webster.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor?
You have a motion?
Have a motion?
Please vote.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you, and congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Brar and Ms. Webster, both Stockdale Mustangs. Now, next item, please.
Appointments, item 6B, one appointment at large to the miscellaneous Department Civil Service Board to serve a term to expire on December 31, 2023, due to the resignation of Ronald Wolf. Applications for appointment have been received from Anthony Pelito, Sky Dent, and Ronald Wolf.
Thank you. As the city clerk provides ballots to the council, I'd like to clarify for the public the voting process. The council will use ballots, and the city clerk will make the outcome of the vote public. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding each appointment. Following the council meeting, the individual ballots will be available for public view in the city clerk's office.
The person receiving the highest number of votes for the term to expire December 31, 2023, is Ronald Wolf.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I move appointment of Ronald Wolf.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items, 7A through 7BB for approval. A staff memorandum has been provided for item 7C transmitting correspondence. An additional staff memorandum has been provided for items 7W and 7X correcting to reflect the item effects towards 3 and 4 only. An additional staff memorandum was provided regarding item 7AX transmitting the agreements.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have received requests to pull item 7G, 7X, 7G by Councilmember Smith, 7X by me, and 7C from Councilman Arias. There are no other changes. I make a motion to approve items 7A through 7BB with the exception of those three items.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And now we'll consider 7C. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. This issue for the public's knowledge, 7C relates to the catalytic converter ordinance that the city has been considering for the past several months. Colleagues and myself and staff have really been deeply engaged on this issue, knowing that it is extremely pervasive, not only throughout our community, but throughout the nation. And it's really an interesting situation where the state and federal government up until this point do not have anything codified in terms of legal language to actually prohibit and prevent some of these thefts. And so, being proactive, my colleagues and I, through the Safe Neighborhoods Committee, have really done our due diligence to be aggressive and be responsive to what the community needs. And so we have drafted this language, and I appreciate the city attorney's office for helping us craft that language. But we know that by August 31st, that there will be several bills that will be considered and taken to Governor Newsom's desk. And we foresee at least a few more additional opportunities to amplify what we are doing through this ordinance to make it the very best resolution that we will put forward for the City of Bakersfield. So with that, I would like to make a referral tonight to send it back to staff for further consideration. And when it does come back, I would respectfully ask that we also provide a presentation on all the different bills that the governor is considering signature. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a motion?
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And now 7G, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is an annexation for a property up on Snow Road. And Mr. Redstone called me today, and it seems that a church is developing that particular parcel or a large part of it and working with the county. And there's specific problems that they're working through with the county. And so it doesn't seem to be the right time, or perhaps the city can have an agreement. And if they annex, then, you know, they can still work with the county, or maybe we just wait until they've got their building permits and stuff done. So I would ask, I would make the motion to refer this back to staff and have staff work with Mr. Redstone and see what the best path forward is.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman. Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And now 7X, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. 7X is the construction and maintenance of a bridge over the railroad to allow the city to operate and build a multi-use trail over the railroad tracks. It comes in the packet as a $433,000 cost, but yet I know there's millions and millions and millions of more dollars that are going to be needed to construct that bridge. So what I'd like to request tonight is that staff come back with the presentation, maybe at the next meeting, and let full council know the breadth and the expense that we're facing with this project. And I move a motion to do that.
You have a motion, but Councilmember Smith would like to address that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have, and I could ask staff, $8 million, $10 million in grant funds to build the whole six-mile trail.
That is correct.
And so, the money is there already through Kern Cog, CMAC grant, and an ATP grant, and we've been working on this project for about 10 years now, and that money also covers this $433,000. So I would move to approve the item X as stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor has a comment?
I know there are grants available for this, and I assume that those are taxpayer-funded grants. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Vice Mayor?
So we're going to spend $8 million on a bridge of taxpayer money? Do you really think that's a good use of taxpayer dollars to do something like that?
Mayor, councilmembers, if I could give a little perspective to the project, the overall project, which is about a $6 million multi-use pathway, of which the bridge is a component to that. This particular agreement with the railroad company is to provide us permission to go within their easement and to build that multi-use pathway bridge component of that $6 million, six-mile-long, $8 million project. There is a timing issue with the grants that are in front of us. One of these grants will expire if we do not show strong effort to secure the property and the easements that are contained within this agreement. Those grant monies are at risk.
Okay, the grant monies are at risk. My question still was, do we think this is a good use of taxpayer money for a bridge for a bike path? $6 million? Is that a good use of funds?
This project has been within the capital improvement program for some time now. It was a strong effort by the department to apply for the grant money to help offset local dollars towards the project. So by leveraging federal dollars towards the project, it makes the local project more palatable, and this is, again, within the Department's CIP.
Okay, but we're still all, we're all talking about taxpayer dollars, no matter if it's local, or if it's federal, or state, or whatever. In my opinion, is this is not a good use of taxpayer dollars, and I will not be supporting it.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias, next.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make clear that this path, you know, increases accessibility for folks who are disabled and who are in need of use of access while in a wheelchair, and I think that this is a great use of taxpayer dollars, and frankly, the federal government is going to collect these tax monies anyways, and I think I would prefer to spend them right here in our hometown. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say the same thing as Councilmember Arias, is that I think it's a great use of taxpayer dollars. We need to promote more active transportation in our community, especially as we look at the next 20, 30 years and the need for multimodal transportation, and I think the point here is that there are federal dollars that I prefer that Bakersfield utilizes and that Bakersfield benefits from, because Bakersfield taxpayers pay these dollars, and I'd like to see more grants come into our community and utilized to improve the quality of life of our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I would just say that, just to clarify, the bridge itself is not $6 million. The whole six miles is about an $8 million project, and yes, it greatly increases the quality of life. The great jewel of Bakersfield, in my opinion, is the Kern River Parkway, and it ties in directly to that and gives access to northwest Bakersfield to the Parkway via active transportation. So my motion stands.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray?
Well, I just want to say I appreciate our Vice Mayor and his heart to be looking out for the taxpayer continually. I've had that same feeling about continually looking out for the taxpayers, but I do have to agree that the federal government right now is giving away money like it's candy. It's disgusting what we're seeing coming out of Washington, in my opinion, of all the spending, but if they are going to give it away, then I would agree with my other colleagues, we might as well bring it right back here, right to home. So I would have to agree to go forward with the project that's already on the books.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. I don't see any other requests to speak, so you have a motion, which is Councilmember Smith's motion to approve. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir voting no, and Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
New business item 12A, council consideration of multiple options concerning reducing the accessibility of tobacco and vaping products in areas surrounding schools. A staff memorandum has been provided, transmitting correspondence received.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney? Going to be addressing, Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I have some summarization comments on this topic for council. So originally, this information was prepared in response to referral from Councilmember Arias to take this item to committee. Staff did research from city attorney's office as well as city manager's office to the different types of programs that are out there that are related to this, and presented that information at committee. The committee recommendation was to bring back to the full council more than one option or what options are available to the city for systematically providing more outreach and enforcement related to tobacco use, particularly with teen tobacco use. So what's before the council tonight with the administrative report are several options, and I'll try and summarize those quickly. Our options range from the council not taking action on this item to adopting a, in the future, a, excuse me, a retail license that would collect a fee from business owners who sell tobacco or vaping products, and that that license fee could then be used as revenue to fund either city operations in support of outreach and enforcement, or as other cities have done, and the county has done, use those revenues to fund the public health department to go and do outreach and enforcement around teen or underage tobacco use. There are some variations within there, where we could also provide one-time funding on a pilot basis to consider this same program and consider its results before implementing a full license fee to businesses. And as I mentioned, there are options that we could look at for the city to try and do outreach and enforcement, the public health department to do so, or even contract with another entity to do outreach, not the enforcement side, that would have to be authorized government entity. I would point out that currently, under our municipal code, the city has the ability to enforce on this topic. We do have that authority today. Our police department, even our code enforcement officers, can enforce on this topic. I think the question has been, how do we systematically do more outreach and enforcement? That was the original request from council, and what I would say is, we do have the ability to do that today, but where that falls in the prioritization of police officer responses, you know, our police officers, our patrol officers are more focused on higher priority issues, and that's why there is contemplation of if additional revenues were available either through a license or through other city funds could provide for further education, outreach, or enforcement activities. City staff has provided the information to the council, and again, the committee recommended bringing forth several options, and so there was not a recommended path forward, and we've laid these options out for council. Happy to answer any questions.
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify and concur with the remarks from the city manager that should the council tonight decide to move forward with a tobacco retail permit, an ordinance did not come out of committee, so there's nothing to really adopt tonight in terms of a new law. So if that's something that the council desires to move forward with, please let us know and give us direction, and whether or not you would like that first reading or that draft to go back to the committee, or to come to the council as a whole at some point in the immediate future. But again, I would want to, do want to reiterate that you have a very, very robust ordinance on the books. In fact, I have said in committee several times, I believe it is one of the best in the county. It's better than the county, it's better than all the cities in the county, and we have the ability right now to enforce that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, maybe you just answered my first question. The Kern County ordinance is less effective than ours?
Vice Mayor, I don't know that I would say less effective. I think perhaps a little bit more accurate would be that we have more prohibitions than the county, and we have more prohibitions than ordinances from other cities.
Okay. So what is different, what in our ordinance is different from the county's?
Vice Mayor and council, the difference between our ordinance and the one in the county is that the county requires, I think one of the speakers got up here, a tobacco retail permit, TRP, and so, again, as Mr. Clegg and his team know, if any retailer sells any type of tobacco product, and tobacco product includes vaping and e-cigarettes, et cetera, one has to obtain a minimum $135, I think in your admin report, it was actually up to $225, a retail permit from the county, from the county health department. That is the difference. And this has been a topic, actually, that historically your council has considered for many years. You've considered it time and time again, and at the end, your council historically has not, has decided not to go down that route because of the burden on small businesses and the lack of control within our own organization, because it would default to Kern County Health. But that is the, that is the major difference in terms of what we're talking about tonight, the actual, the actual permit.
Okay, thank you. So are, is code enforcement, or are police officers actually citing for violations of this at this time? Or is it just not possible?
Vice Mayor, it is possible. I don't have data that shows whether we're doing it or not. In discussion with the police department, the feedback has been that when they're aware of a particular issue, it may be egregious or something to follow up on, that they have done that and can do that, but as a proactive measure, we're not proactively pursuing this as an enforcement emphasis.
And so, if we were to do it proactively, what would that entail? What changes would that entail?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. In discussions, again, with Chief Tarr and his team, where this falls and the many priorities that they're trying to address, it would look like perhaps once or twice a year, being able to do some proactive work on this topic, but they wouldn't recommend more than that, given the many other issues that they're prioritizing.
And is the police code doesn't go out, code enforcement doesn't go out without?
They do not.
Okay.
And thank you to the city attorney for reminding me, our fire arson investigators also have the authority to do this, and it sometimes in the past have done proactive enforcement on this topic.
Well, that's good news. So is there any way we can combine the city retail checks in some form or fashion? And then, the people here tonight, I mean, they're looking for an answer. I don't know that we can solve the adult problem there, but maybe they could join a local nonprofit, or get an organization together that could go out into schools and give programs and presentations on smoking and the dangers of that, and maybe there's even a way that we could put them together with somebody that could do that.
Vice Mayor, I think that both working with interested parties and organizations that work around this topic and connecting folks to do this on a volunteer basis, or even I would, I could, would suggest, it's within the range of options we presented to council, that if we wanted to identify funding at perhaps a lower level than this retail license would require, could even provide some resources to these community groups to do just what you've suggested.
Well, I would like to see that, those two things happen, and, you know, if we can do the retail checks, that would be awesome, because it's a law on the books that's not really doing anything. And I think these people are committed to non-smoking and education, and I think the way to go about that is go into our schools, or into churches, or other forms of meetings and present presentations, and let these people know and these kids know that this is not the right thing to be doing, and the danger for them to be involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Parlier?
Thanks, Mayor. What I gathered from Ken, I think we're kind of in a line on his thinking, but I have a couple other questions, too, and Chief, could you come on down for a sec? I'd just rather hear it from the horse's mouth, what you're doing or not doing. I know your plate is full, but a few questions maybe you can answer for me specifically. Within the last year, has the PD done any enforcement decoy programs, shoulder tap programs, or light programs like we do with the ABC grant?
Mayor Go, Councilmember Parlier, not that I'm aware of, specifically focusing on an operation targeting or conducting an investigation of an establishment for this purpose, no.
Do you feel that if we did something, and if we did do something, I'd rather have it in-house than gather money and give it to the county, whether we do it within the police department, code enforcement, or arson, because we at least have some sort of control? Because if we gather this permitting money, if we go down that road and give it to the county, I don't think we have any ability to, they say they're going to go out and do these programs, and maybe they will, maybe they won't, but if we have it in-house, I think we, again, have more control of it. So if we did have some sort of permit funding, or say we don't, do you feel you have the availability to increase enforcement with these tobacco shops?
Mayor Go, Councilmember Parlier, it's a difficult question to ask me. We exist as an organization to protect the public, and we are committed to protecting the public in every way that that means, and it certainly means prohibiting access by our youth of things that are harmful to them, including these types of products. And so I would tell you, as an organization, we're 100% committed to that. Philosophically, my approach has been and will continue to be partnerships and focus Philosophically, my approach has been and will continue to be partnerships in focusing on the drive and the demand and the underlying issues. And so I would be very interested in partnering with some local organizations to increase our capacity, to increase the ability of us as an organization and certainly as a community to combat this. I think it's going to take it on every single level. But right now, the men and women of the police department are committed every day and every night to many, many public safety challenges. And in my view, in this particular one, it is extremely important, and it's going to require partnerships truly to be able to address the underlying issues, the root causes. And in my view, that's the only way that we're going to do it effectively or efficiently.
Thanks, Chief. Christian, if we did some sort of enforcement, do you think there's a possibility code or, like Jenny said, arson could potentially have the capacity, I know they're impacted too, to do something, you know, in regards to enforcement?
Yeah, Councilmember Parlier and Mayor and Council, I think potentially there's the capacity. I think if I could put it into context, we do have a backlog currently with our code enforcement officers doing their, you know, complaint-based and some limited proactive code enforcement. This maybe stretches out, you know, the timeliness, but it is possible to make this assignment to arson or code.
Okay. What about park rangers? I'm teasing. Okay, that's where I'm at. I kind of think instead of trying to figure this out on a dais, I almost lean towards sending it back to committee again, and I apologize, I wasn't there for that, just to flush this out a little bit more and drill down on if we do do something in-house, who has the capacity to do that. And as far as the permitting, again, I kind of lean towards, I don't want any of our county, our permitting fees were something we don't necessarily have control over. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Parlier, was that a referral then to send it back to committee?
Well, I was going to wait until what you had to say first.
Okay. Well, here it comes.
We'll go from there.
Okay. I was going to say that first and foremost, thank you to all of the young people who are here today. I really appreciate hearing from you directly, and I admire you for your leadership in the community. And it means a lot to me, and it's really important that we hear from our youth, and your youth voices matter. So thank you very much. So I think, you know, as I review the TRL proposal, the two major pieces that are valuable to me, one is the education to the retailers, to actually communicate to them, what are the ordinances on the books in the city of Bakersfield? And I think we ought to do that, to engage those retailers in a very proactive way. And then obviously, the second thing that has been noted already is the, that enforcement, daily enforcement operation. And there is, I believe, value in an underage decoy operation with youth decoys, and establishing that framework, that program, seems like something that we ought to do within the city, given our existing ordinance. And so I think that's what I'm hearing from my colleagues as well. And so I'd like to make a motion that we send this to committee with those two key actions, both the education piece to the retailers and a program related to the underage decoy operation.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray. Was that not your motion? Well, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say, again, I appreciate the youth coming to and speaking for your generation. Every generation needs to speak for their own. I don't think we've got an ordinance problem here, though. I don't think that's what's going to solve the issue. We've got an enforcement problem. And as our chief has said, there is a lot of enforcement that needs to be done in this community, and this is one that seems to be a little bit more difficult. I think as our vice mayor has said, that we can form those community partnerships. The city manager and I talked about this this week, that maybe there are some ARPAP funds or something that we could pull a little bit out of to try to, you know, put together, excuse me, a program where we can bring people together. It's a real problem. It has been for a long time, and I appreciate your passion towards it. But I don't think putting another ordinance on the books, when we already have, as our city attorney has said, we already have a robust ordinance now, it's just a matter of enforcement. And that's where the challenge is these days with so many other things happening in our community. So I think I would just be in favor of, again, community partnership and see what we can do to have a pilot program to see if we can make a dent in it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. In the report, it stated that the county program has been successful, went from a 12% noncompliance down to a 4% noncompliance. So what education, what enforcement, what do they do to have that success?
Councilmember, Mayor, and Council, I'll acknowledge that some of those details are beyond my expertise, but what I am aware of is that they have public health inspectors that go onsite to the retailers, share the code expectations and code requirements, and that they do follow-up checks on them. One example is their ordinances don't allow for certain advertising materials to target, you know, younger populations, and they've gone back and checked to ensure that those have been removed and taken down when they provide a notice that they're up and that they shouldn't be there. And that they have done some of those decoy missions in those businesses through public health officers and their inspection programs.
Thank you. I'm in favor of it going back to committee, but I just wanted to state, my feeling for the committee is that it seems that the county has had any success. They've got a structure. They have enforcement. And so to, and it makes sense to have the health department do it. And in metro Bakersfield, on one corner it's city, and the other corner is, you know, you got one store across the street, and those are one city, one county, and different enforcement doesn't make sense in this particular instance. So my two cents is, you know, the county's had success, and to work with them might make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor. Christian, has there been any communication with the county if we did do something with them, what their enforcement would look like for us?
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. We have had conversations with public health, that we invited them to the committee meeting. They participated and shared, you know, some of the information about their program. We have not explored the details of the costs and, you know, kind of what, how much enforcement we get for how much of the dollar amount. We haven't gone that far, but they are, they are open to providing this level of education and enforcement like they have done in some of the other smaller cities and in the county area. But I think that was under the assumption that there would be that revenue base from the retail license.
So potentially, they would have to go out in a higher position to be able to do what we need to be done, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do they already enforce within the county, within those county pockets?
They do.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to thank the youth and folks in the community who came out on this important issue. I was just doing a little bit of research. This, you know, conversation, this ordinance, this retail license, has come up many times before the city council. This has been an ongoing fight, and I know there are several of individuals in the group that spoke tonight who have been a part of that journey for a very long time, and I want to pay respect to that because I think it's admirable. You guys are the professionals, the experts on this issue, and you know how much it deeply impacts the youth in our community. And we know that this is a learned behavior. If you start at a young age, you know, the chances of you, you know, developing that habit and continuing that habit are much greater. And the chances, if you see a parent or somebody else use it on a daily basis, is also a factor in you and you passing it on to your children. So I think, you know, we're in a unique position to do something about this. It sounds like my colleagues and I are interested in doing something, but it may take a little bit more time to thoroughly vet this and make sure that we have the very best resolution to this issue. I also agree with my colleagues. I think that education is an important role in this entire movement. I know that the schools are taking some steps in that direction. I think we could do a little bit better, and I would actually like to take the city attorney's advice for our conversation this morning and also engage our youth commission. Those are some dedicated individuals who really want to create change for our youth in the city of Bakersfield, and I would love for them to have a conversation and figure out how it is that they can increase the education and awareness around youth utilizing vaping and tobacco products. I think that this is, you know, the council tonight has an opportunity to establish an ordinance that is effective, that has, you know, is data-driven. I'm reading the same report that I think Bob has pulled up. In 2016, 12% of tobacco retailers in Kern County violated the county's TRL. Two years later, that number declined to 4%. The data shows that this works, and there's a reason that, you know, eight other cities in the county of Kern have adopted this thing. And it's because they know that this will actually improve the health and safety of our kids. So I'm supportive of us continuing to vet this process, but I just want everybody to know that I stand in agreement with your position and look forward to you guys coming back to us, both in committee and back to council, as we put together the best resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. As this goes back to committee, I would respectfully request that the opportunities of conversation and discussion should not be so limited to one or two things. There are great ideas involved in this. And Councilmember Arias, I think that's an awesome idea to get the youth commission involved in this. This is a great opportunity to really give them something to work on and to give the people in the audience right now something to work on, too. And together, hopefully, we can get some people going out and spreading the word, teaching these young students. Because if we don't start with the young students, we don't start with the youngsters. It's never going to stop. It will never stop. It's too late for people in their 20s and 30s and whatever. We need to start with the youth, and we have to get that message out to them. So I would respectfully request that it be a broad-based meeting with lots of opportunities for conversation and ideas.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't see any other requests. You have a motion?
Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's statements.
I don't see any requests. Now I do. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three referrals to make tonight. Number one, it has been, well, I should say, three years ago in 2019, the city council adopted the program guidelines for the Economic Opportunity Area Program. As council knows, and the community may not, there are actually seven designated economic opportunity areas within the city. It so happens that I've worked within four of those seven over the last three years. And I think it's time that we revisit those guidelines. You know, this is a brand-new program for the city of Bakersfield. It's something that's very promising in terms of promoting economic development and revitalization in some of our important neighborhoods throughout the, throughout the city. But there are some tweaks that ought to be made with regard to this program. And so I'd like to make a referral tonight that that program and those guidelines go to the Budget and Finance Committee for review. Number two is, in 2018, the city council adopted an ordinance to allow for microbreweries and distilleries to exist within the downtown core. In 2019, we changed those regulations that, that no longer require microbreweries to have a bona fide kitchen or food component to their establishment. Tonight, I'm asking that city staff review an ordinance amendment to allow for micro distilleries or small distilleries to exist within the downtown core without a bona fide food component. It so happens that we have a potential business, a successful distillery from Southern California who is looking at the opportunity to relocate into downtown Bakersfield, and I would like to see us accommodate them and have that, have that ordinance revised. And so if we can, if staff can bring that back to council, I'd appreciate it. And then finally, very concerned about these residential motels. In the city of Bakersfield, we have a number of motels that, and hotels that exist as residential properties or single-room occupancy SROs throughout the community. In fact, on Union Avenue, there is a, there is a property at 906 Union Avenue, the Manila Inn, that has recently closed. This is a potential hazard in displacing individuals who are, who are low-income and who have no other place to, to live. And this is a concern up and down Union Avenue. I'd like to make a referral tonight that we, that the Planning and Development Committee review a program that was established in the city of LA that reviews a listing of motels and hotels that are repurposed for residential purposes, adopting a, an inventory and a metric system through which they rate each and every motel and hotel, and then look towards a program that is similar to the LA program that they call a lease-to-own program that helps acquire those properties, put them in the city's hands so that we can turn them around into high-quality permanent supportive housing. We know that we have an affordable housing crisis in this community right now, and we need additional affordable housing units right away. There are many motels that are currently declining in terms of deferred maintenance and other issues with those properties. I think that this could potentially be a win-win-win situation in that it addresses those motels that have issues, it adds capacity and inventory for affordable housing, and it also helps us clean up some of our neighborhoods that are most troubled, Union Avenue, parts of Baker Street, and other parts of downtown Bakersfield. And so I'd like us to review that, and I hope that the Planning and Development Committee can consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Broadband connectivity has been a priority with the city council. I know that the city staff have been looking into options and opportunities to bring enhanced access to broadband in Bakersfield. Can staff please prepare a workshop presentation at an upcoming council meeting to provide an update on broadband projects that could be ready in the near future? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. We received a letter recently from Water Audit, and they made a recommendation that the city do a study to inquire into and review the feasibility of alternative actions to mitigate the ongoing injury to the public trust caused by the dewatering of the Kern River in the city of Bakersfield. I think that's a good idea. I think to do a study and to see what the feasibility is and what alternative actions might be along the public trust doctrine for water in the Kern River. So I would like the city to move forward with that, if possible. And the second item I have is, it's August, so it's a safe time to talk about this. Every year, the 4th of July, you get constituents on both sides, you know, we need to outlaw fireworks, no, we need fireworks. And so I'd like to refer... And so, I'd like to refer to the Leg and Lit Committee fireworks issues, you know, what we're doing as far as enforcement, if we do need to do more, and if council has changed their opinion on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, just thinking back to some of the comments that were made earlier during public comment from Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Lane, we've had many complaints and many comments over the past couple of months about this issue of conserving water and the water that is provided by the city to the county for the golf course. And I think it's the appropriate time for us to ask for staff to provide us an update on that status of that issue. I know that staff has been working diligently, Mr. Chianello and his team, so I think it'd be appropriate for us to get an update. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I don't see any other requests to speak. Today was a very important day in education. Today marked the opening of Kern High School District's 19th school, the first school to open, comprehensive high school to open since 2008. It's a magnificent 58-acre project, and we're so proud of it. So, tonight, in honor of the Del Oro High School sons, I'm going to adjourn the meeting in honor and celebration of them. The meeting's adjourned at 6:47.